Welcome, I'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Committee on Council Processes for Monday, August 11th, 2025. And we have committee members here. Have them introduce themselves, starting in the room.
Sidney Ziller, Bloomington City Council District 6.
And I'm Zoom.
Matt Flaherty, Council Member at Large. Sorry to be a minute late here, running between meetings today, but glad we have the virtual option.
Thank you, and I'm Isabel P. Mont Smith, City Council District 1. From the Clerk's Office, we have.
Deputy Clerk Colleen Williamson.
And Deputy Clerk Jennifer Crossley.
And from City Council Office, we have.
Lisa Lai, our Council Attorney.
Christine Chain, Council Researcher.
All right, welcome, and welcome to those from the public who are here. So on today's agenda, we have a follow-up on some old business. The proposal for council member liaisons to boards and commissions. Then an update, if she's ready to give one, from Deputy Clerk Crossley about code of conduct. For all commission members. Then we will touch on the sign-in for public comment at meetings. Proposal for planning and scheduling of deliberation sessions that was approved recently. Update on the Title II overhaul and administrative manual, and then we will have public comment on those items. Then we will have a new item, order of business at regular sessions of council. This is kind of bringing back something that we've discussed. In last year, and maybe put down in January as well. How to incorporate reports from entities related to the city but not city departments. And then there's a general discussion of order of business, depending on how much time we have left. And public comment on that portion, and then we will adjourn, and I believe we do need to adjourn by 1:30 today because that's when. Councilmember Flaherty has to jump off. For another meeting. Any? Additions, comments on the agenda? Okay. All right, so let's dive right into the proposal for council member liaisons to boards and commissions that was approved by council and now. Councilmembers who like to just flip this into a.
Yes, so this is on page two to page four of the packet. And it pretty much just. Transfers all of the information from the proposal that we approved into a. Legal document, and I worked with Lisa and Christine. To make it. I don't really have a lot of others than that. I didn't add anything past what we talked about in our proposal.
Okay. Well. I think this looks really good. Councilmember Flaherty, any feedback on this?
No, looks good to me. Appreciate the work on it and this step forward in our board and commission. Liaising and communication process.
Should I just bring this? To counsel?
Yeah, I think that. Do we need to vote on this, or?
I wouldn't think so, since we already passed.
Yeah, it's just. Making official what we've already discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything in Bloomington, in a simple code. Which indicates whether they would need to even vote.
Okay, in that case, I will draft an email to council leadership and staff. With a request that this makes it onto the agenda at some point.
Okay, great. And you got my note about the. Yes, right, yes. That's. That's reflected here.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, we can move right along then to an update on the public comment.
So. Hello. I spoke with Anna Holmes and Audrey from Legal. And so shortly after this, or after last month's meeting, I went and spoke with them because they received it and they saw it. It is not ready yet, so they had some things that we're all just kind of going through. Just to kind of take a little bit more of a deeper dive, because the thought process to this was to also implement. The code of conduct into training requirements for staff liaisons, as well as new and existing board members. So that's also something in addition to. This code of conduct that I'm working on. I was hoping that it would be ready by this particular. By this particular meeting, but. I did get a good feedback and it was a good start, and we're gonna find to comb it a little bit more so. That we can have it all ready, because the idea is to make sure, once this is officially ready. The idea is to have new and existing commission members and board members. Sign on to it, because in the event that there is something. That we kind of have to refer back to in case people need to be removed. This is something that we would have that clearly defines the rights to remove them. So again, this is something that I am working on. I don't want to hold my breath and say that I won't be ready for next month, but it is a work in progress, so I'll hope to. Keep you all updated as we continue to go through.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you're welcome. Okay. Um. So we did, the council did approve the sign-in for public comment at meetings. You know, I was just wondering if there are any updates from council staff or from the clerk's office. About implementation, if we're still looking at being ready by September 3rd. Anybody have an opinion on that?
I meant with ITS. To describe. The process in general terms, and they would like to be included in a discussion with the clerk's office. As particularly with respect to the display of the QR code. My understanding is that. The clerk's office will organize. Like some communication. At some point, I think. Council staff or staff at ITS should sit down and discuss it.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Clerk Holden, since she's not here, but we can certainly pass that information on to you.
Okay, that sounds good. And if I recall correctly, Deputy Clerk Crossley. The clerk's office already has one or two tablets.
As I have, yes.
So. That's already on hand, it's a matter of the logistics of QR code. Right? Any other questions on that, or? Moving right along. The proposal for planning and scheduling to deliberation sessions. Council, I can spare that.
Yes, Lisa, please. Fellow Sam Roll started. His summer internship again last week. On Wednesday, and this is a task that he is working on. There wasn't sufficient time to. Prepare a proposal and a potential Google document. By today's meeting, but the intention is to have something for the next. Committee on Council Processes.
So I think we had talked about a Google form, right, so that it would only be accessible.
Right, I think he's operating, he's familiar with the public access, how to learn opinions and question. His proposal, I think, involves preparing some type of Google document that would be maintained by one individual. There's something that council, or somebody. With parameters that would then comply with the package.
Okay, great. Any questions on that? All right. Title II overhaul and administrative manual. So I had another meeting with Christine a few weeks ago. About. We finished going through Title II, the section on council. And. She is going to be. Preparing a draft administrative manual that has things that we, that. Through Councilmember Asari's original proposal and through our work, we decided to pull into an administrative manual. So.
And all right, Christine, so I'm starting with the raw procedure first, and then we'll discuss that, or and. Put it into maybe a potential administrative manual. And also I'm meeting with Holden this afternoon to talk with the clerk's office on some of the heads up.
Just a non-for-profit, just a couple of things that we noticed in the end before we got through it. I was trying to.
And also, we're preparing some of the questions, also additional to confirm with the clerk's office.
That's right, I forgot the distinction between rules of procedure. And administrative manual.
Yeah, so I guess we'll work on the rules of procedure first. And then maybe we can discuss what to put into the administrative manual.
Yes.
The. The new deputy attorney is scheduled to begin more in a week, and I think that this would be an appropriate. Project for that attorney to be involved as well. However, my intention hasn't been to slow down progress and wait for that person to onboard, but I would anticipate. That the attorney would be a wonderful resource to involve in this.
Yeah, so I think the distinction that we discussed between. Rules of procedure and administrative manual is like rules of procedure are what we do during meetings, and I would do that.
And that will be also approved by the council, and that will be also in the Bloomington list out.
It'd be referenced.
Reference, yeah.
A simple code, it'd be approved by council, whereas the administrative manual is more like behind the scenes, like. If I have an idea for legislation, here's best practices of what I should do. How I should work with the clerk's office and staff and all that.
There are varying degrees in my research, and the level of formality and specificity. Among municipalities with respect to these different types of rules. So at some point. You know, different possibilities, different options available to council, and we work through this process too. That might be an appropriate discussion topic within this committee at some point. How specific? Should. Should the rules be, is there consensus regarding the level of formality? I think some people have opinions with respect to the use of Roberts' Rules of Order, for example. Some municipalities don't use Roberts' Rules, others do. And it begs the question, if. If council wants to be less formal. Then what rules would take place, take the place of Roberts' Rules? Would there be certain guidelines? That that type of information would be helpful and drafted. Ultimately, I think in council staff will need to. Draft these actual rules and procedures.
Yeah, I think we're just at the stage of like, this should be in there, and this should be in there, and not like the actual language. But I think that's a good point. That this committee maybe should discuss. Whether we do want to get rid of Roberts' Rules and have. Everything in the rules of procedure, how specific we want to be. These are big questions.
And you might consider having this as a topic of a deliberation session also.
Yeah. I think that type of decision would probably be best. Made with all nine of us, or at least like that type of deliberation.
I think it would be more productive to do that at a time a- after. The deputy attorney has had some time to. To adjust and run more, I don't know. Council's processes.
Yeah. That makes sense. I also want to record that I've talked to Isan again, and. He's gonna loop back in to next time I meet with Christine. Colleen is the contact for clerk's office, so we'll loop her back in as well. So. We are trying to include everybody who has important ideas to contribute. If you all have any specific thoughts on it, please let us know. You all, meaning Matt and Cindy.
Sorry, I missed the last thing you said right before that, Isabel, with respect to with ESOC's update.
Oh, so he is interesting, he, I conveyed to him the. The last, the content of the last two meetings I had with Christine. And the clerk's office and going through Title II, and he wants to be in on any future meetings. So. And Colleen is the point person for the clerk's office.
Didn't we run into some. Logistical challenges with respect to our past assumption that we could involve noncommittee members in committee meetings? Because if all four committee members are here and Councilmember Asari joined, we would then have a quorum of the council and like. Running challenges there.
That's definitely a concern, yes. I think at this point. He's joining like a subcommittee of this commission, I mean unofficial, like just a working group.
Yeah.
He.
Yeah.
So far. So I, yeah, they would be tricky if he came to a meeting.
Got it.
Of this.
Yeah, I have, I support. With his interest in the topic, you know. Yeah, it's a little bit logistically challenging. I think, I think up to two of these committee members, right, this committee. Members of this committee could work with Councilmember Asari. As needed, and then maybe a proposal is brought at some point and represented not. By the committee members who participated. And not by Councilmember Asari directly, that's like one option. If we're expecting a proposal to have some discussion at this committee level, I mean. Which seems appropriate.
Yes, duly noted. Any other thoughts on that before we move on? One thing that I just realized over the weekend is that. The city clerk is listed. As city council employees and officials. Or something like that. Which is not appropriate, I think, so there's some. Some big reasons to do this overhaul. Jennifer, I was just saying that currently in Title II. The city clerk, the duties of the city clerk are outlined like under the heading of city council. Which really should be its own. Session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Own Title II, it has all the fun parts to it.
All right, let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on any of the old business that we've just reviewed? Yes.
Very briefly, hello everybody.
Would you like to come to the table so you can?
This is correct, don't be alarmed. I guess it goes, resolution I'm carrying around. Terry Ambler, I live in Bloomington, it's nice to see you all. I love this committee because it's important. I will say just one little. Again, both the council liaisons, I bow myself to resolution, as well as deliberative sessions or whatever we call them, things. Are all related to community boards, so there are some obviously connections to this work that are important. And we thought about by the city in a broader way, as the mayor actually has talked about from time to time. And the council and the council, maybe the council process have talked about from time to time, so it's all connected in some ways, as I was just saying, but that's not why. I'm gonna make a brief comment about, positive comment really, about the resolution, the council liaison resolution, section three, no, item three. And I gotta find it here, excuse me, which says, informing assigned boards and commission chairs and staff liaisons of any relevant legislation. Be developed or discussed by the council's listening feedback from the board or commission's onset of reflection. So this is first of all, correct, I'm right, I started it down, so I'm just saying it's good. And I say, this, this goes so far, this is an element that goes way beyond anything, the NOVAT report, NOVAT report. Consultants were charged or understood their charge to be. And it's, it's very important, so my question really is, is that to be discussed, I know, I'm just putting it out there. It's how you make this work, because I think the question is, very nice, not paper, correct? As you know how that works, but I'm saying, how do the members of these commissions truly get informed about what this means? How do you know that'll be done by the liaisons? How do you know what the committee says back about how they think that's gonna happen about? How do we charge empower if you? You allowed to say that, where you want, President Pinz? How do we help these boards and commissions to do their work well and understand their role as. They are generally understood to be, that it's not simply one board or commission may therefore speak to. Councilmember about something, which is good by itself. But it also may be an opportunity for the board or commission to ask their. Communities, whoever that board or commission might be, whoever they may tend to interact with, whoever it is that is interested in their work because of that committee, boards or commission's interest. How do they get feedback and therefore educate the public about the government's work, educate the government about the public work? I'm just saying, this is an opportunity, I hope you will think it through about how you can make this happen optimally. And how the board, I'm not trying to get, you know, I'm not trying to say the world, I gave it a lot of back. I'm just saying you can do this work a little better if the stakeholders involved understand it. And they got their own set of protocols on how it's gonna work. And the board of the commissions have the capacities to use what they're set up to be. To hear from their publics. About the issue that's gonna come before the council. So this is no different in a way, kind of sort of, the deliberative session I used, they've been brought to voice anymore, voice your report. So I'm just saying, it's an opportunity. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, and there is, I'm gonna back away slowly, the. Roberts' Rules, I'm a little open question, but there are a lot of. Meeting protocols, and they're not formally Roberts' Rules. There's a judge, I have a bunch of them, there's a judge in California, and I used to work in California. Judge in California, you don't have a spare time, made up some. Can't think of his name right now, it's called, his name, our rules of law, and they've been used, I can send it to whoever, you know, because there are, I'm very dissuaded. I'm just saying there are other things besides Roberts' Rules that are simpler, maybe used in appropriate places.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Doesn't look like it. All right. So let's go, move on to order of business at regular sessions. This is something that. We talked about last year. And the order, of course, was changed last year, we now have first ratings before second ratings. And we have a great document that Sam Roll, our intern, complied for us in December. I wanted to specifically call out the question that came up last year and has actually come up. This year as well, because we just had a report from the BEDC, which is also not a city department. So currently in our order of business, which is in code, it says, you know, reports from the mayor and city offices. Well, we often hear reports that are not from the mayor and city offices during that period, they usually have something to do with the city. Some partnerships or something, some organizations that the city supports. But that's not what it says right now. So I want to throw that open for discussion.
We're already kind of doing it, so we just need to catch up in terms of code.
Well, that's, that's one way to look at it. I know when Isan was still on this committee last year. He kind of questioned what the point of it was, of hearing these reports. And I know he and others have made it a point to ask, what can the council do for you, you know, what, how can we work with you on common goals when these entities present? So we could also say. We're not gonna have non-city entities present to us. So I guess there are two directions to go in this.
Maybe it's a spectrum of sorts, like there's a. A range of things you might consider at that moment, like I. I personally find them valuable, I guess, I think, you know, the council meetings as a forum for. A getting all nine council members most of the time, you know, in a room, or in a room and on Zoom to convene and. Hear information and updates from folks. I think inclusion of board and commissions that want to report out in that way or that format. Has been a longstanding practice and is also, you know, valuable, so I think like a slight evolution to include that. But when I said a spectrum, I mean like, we've also had like, kind of silly, sorry, city, city coordinated like nonprofit reports, right, like. Canopy Bloomington like came and reported a few months ago. And others, and like that maybe starts to get a little farther afield, if it's like a city project, like, you know, or city funded initiative, like I think you can kind of make the case. So there's probably some scheduling discretion, you know, for the council president to manage. Just how much we can fit into those sections and not have, you know. Sixty to ninety minutes of preliminary before we get to the kind of meat of the agenda. At regular sessions, so I think there's some balance to all that, but. I think personally, I still, I still favor. Mainly how we've been using that to date. And I think to Councilor Zulik's point, a very modest change to code, to the extent that our. Regular order of business remains in code would help clarify that. I think, one last note on that front, which is that I've kind of been a fan of. Like, we tend to just extend the twenty-minute section for each of those portions, like. As long as we like at any time, and that's part of the kind of like creep of. That section of the agenda that I think should be more assiduously managed. I don't think it is common, and maybe this has changed under, under current council leadership, but I don't think it's common that. The board and commission members or, you know. City department heads often know that they are expected to fit within a certain timeframe, or they think they have twenty minutes, but it turns out there's actually two or three reports from the, you know, opposite there. Or for folks in the mayor's administration, and like they really should have had. You know, seven or ten, and we've got questions, all that, and so kind of managing all that. Is an important part of administering that portion of the agenda, and I'm probably having like a timer up. And just making sure there's very clear communication about the expected. Constraints on, you know, sharing the top level, most important points with us and not letting all reports kind of. Stretch, which I think we have a little bit of a practice or habit of doing.
So you agree both with keeping it and sticking to time?
Yeah, I think every presenter should have five minutes. Get, get to the important stuff. And stop reading off the spots.
I wanted to, I wanted to clarify. What the council members, what we're saying was respected time limit. So you, you favor time limit for all reports?
Yes.
City departments and entities that might not technically be the city department.
Yeah, I think we should make it clear that everyone has a certain amount of time for the presentation, and at that point, we'll move on to questions.
And I will say that the council president usually does tell them, like, oh, we have two reports tonight, so. You have, you know. Five minutes. And then, because we've only five minutes for questions. So those conversations, I think, do happen.
Yeah.
Between the council president and. Whoever's presenting.
I think about a conversation is just different than a timer.
Yeah.
No, that's true. That's true. And I think. The indication in the past has been instead of five minutes, ten minutes. And so I think. Reducing the time to five minutes would have an impact on the duration of the meetings.
And then that will give people time to feel like they're not being rushed for questions.
Last, last point on that front is just, I think it will take some discipline on all our parts to actually kind of stick to that if we're trying to shift norms a bit. And I think. Again, we've been very lax, even if we're communicating that there are kind of time limits, I don't think most presenters have like often. Actually like practiced or held themselves to that. There's sort of this kind of vague notion out there, but again, the timer, I think that will help. And also, we might want to say, it's like, look, we've got a lot on the agenda tonight, like. We've met our five minutes. Like, thank you very much for getting what, through what you got. Like, please send us additional notes if you have them, but we're going to move to questions now and just stay on schedule, you know?
We, we've not published a written rule to that effect. And that might help support enforcing a time limit. We're in the process of updating the council's website too, and that may be. One type of, of rule that could be placed on council's website. Presentations to council, time limits. That might be helpful in educating the public to understand why those limits exist, because otherwise, you easily can have four hour meetings. With an hour and a half of reports.
So I'm wondering if there's only one report scheduled for an evening, where they still only get five minutes? And who determines whether.
I think it should be a standard practice.
It's easier for me as a staff member to explain that rule and help enforce it if, if it's uniform. Regardless of whether there's one report, three reports, or four.
I, I like that. Yeah, I agree with that. And it, it helps kind of set the boundaries that it's a maximum, you know, of twenty minutes. It doesn't mean we should just fill the space because it's there. And that might then also lead to, if we're expecting, if the norm is five minutes for presentation, five minutes for questions, say. Then maybe with extremely rare exception, you know, the max for a given. Meeting is two reports within each of the subbullets, right? Council members are a bit different. That's a little more. Flexible depending on what folks have to say. And we don't tend to run into problems there. But for mayor and city offices and boards and commissions are included in that portion. Or council committees, same deal. You know. Yeah, kind of, kind of setting the upper limit of, of number of things that get booked in that section based on that time limit.
Yes, I found it interesting that some municipalities seem to schedule reports. A particular department report, for example, at a particular time of the year. And I mean, that would take significant amount of time in terms of planning. That throughout a, a year long calendar and coordinating that and messaging that to departments, but. I found that to be interesting. I've noticed often what happens is. We have a desert of, of, a lack of reports. And then suddenly, council will be asked to hear. You know, eight in a really compressed period of time.
Do you think that once we're back to being fully staffed, that that would be a project that you would have time to undertake?
Part of it is not just council staff, but coordinating that with the departments and the administration. I don't know what kind of support that would receive. It's something that we could discuss. But that's, that's a good, that's one reason why I bring this up, to see if there's any support to do anything like that on the council members.
I wouldn't mind.
I think it's worth exploring. So going back, we, we look at. Page six of the packet. So here is the order of business. So if we look at. For the reports from the mayor and city offices. How should we revise that? I'd also like to be able to include the city clerk's office.
I think the, to me, the clerk's office would reasonably be included under that, under city offices, if we just added, and city boards and commissions.
I agree.
And then, so that would not allow reports from the EDC or. You could say the head of the county has authority or others.
Maybe like city adjacent entities? Like, I think that would include like BT.
Or city partners.
Yeah.
Community. Yeah. I mean, I. Matt mentioned the.
Kind of people mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the tree people, Bloomington, which really was kind of. You know, stretching it a little bit. I mean, I was president, I allowed them to present, but. Yeah, I guess it would be up to the president to interpret that and, and, and limiting, you know, considering we live at the time.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's not uncommon for folks to have experts as part of their. Presentation. I think that, that type of thing would have to fit within. This is the Parks Department presenting on the administration of, you know, some funds to do X, and they're presenting along with. Oh my goodness, our Parks Director's name is escaping me at the moment. But what's that?
Tim Street.
Yes, yes. Thank you. I, I, yeah, anyway. And having, you know. A, a community group who's helping with the work to, to present alongside that kind of thing. So I think it. It, it, we will reasonably be able to include those types of special cases. Because they really should only come in when there is a strong tie to some type of city program or something we're administering, right? And so there's always, it's always going to kind of be under a, a heading of some type of board or commission partnership or city department's work, I think. Again, with some discretion, of course, with the, with the president.
So. Reports from the mayor, city offices. And or city boards and commissions?
Did you still want to have a spot for like BEDC or?
Well, I mean, what. How I interpreted what Matt just said was that it would be like the economic development, the EDC, if not the stable development department. Would come and say, we partner with the BEDC, and here's what they have to say.
Okay.
I mean, that kind of would require a, a city staff member to be there when previously, they didn't have to be there, so I don't know. Is that why you met Matt?
I, I think so. I think BEDC is an interesting one. I mean, they still have city funding, do they not? Obviously, they coordinate very closely with Economic Sustainable Development Department. I think it would be great to have, you know, Director Cooper Smith there to help. Set the stage slash context for what, you know, Jen Pearl may share, for instance, and, and kind of help us to, to connect the dots as well. For, for the way this is impacting city work. City department work. So I, I, I realize that's a. Yes, potentially a request for someone to be present for the beginning of a meeting. You know, if they're going to present, but I, I think that's reasonable.
I like that because. Like you said, Matt, it. Kind of puts it in the context of the city. Why are we hearing from BEDC? Well, because the city gives them money and then partners and, you know, trying to get good jobs and, you know, the department head or. Or wouldn't even have to be the department head, it could be T. D'Elarosa or whoever from that department could give that context and I think that would be helpful. And it. Would, are you envisioning also that, like. The tree commission could give a report and then say, here's Canopy Bloomington to tell us what they're doing. Would a, a commission also be able to bring in community partners or?
I think so. I think so. If it's a, it's a, it's a partnership, you know, of some kind. Again, I think there's always going to be some line drawing or discretion involved, but like that. If that's how it's being administered, just through a board or permission. I don't think it should be like, we're going to present, and then we're going to have this other folks tell you about a totally disparate and unrelated thing. It should be a, a cohesive project or, or, you know, initiative that's being reported on. But yeah, I think that's reasonable.
That's a good idea. For your, the two deputy clerks here does city offices and your, you just add a clerk's office.
I don't check us for bold about that.
Because we could easily add.
Like, yeah.
So you mind if we put a pin in that and then. We could maybe vote on it at our next meeting? Is that a vote note from the city clerk whether she would rather have a call out?
All is for the week.
Okay. Good, good. Well, the next part of the agenda is just to, a general discussion of our order of business. And there were. Several examples and some analysis by Sam Ruhl. Let's see, we have about half hour left. I believe a little time for public comment. So what stood out to you all looking at the comparison report? Anything that others are doing that looks better than how we're doing it or? Other feedback?
I kind of felt like every single one had like pros and cons in a way that ours does too. Like, there wasn't one that I looked at. I was like, oh, this is. This is it. But. Yeah. Thought it was interesting that Muncie. Just because like they cut out everything that's not. Like just legislation, I guess. But I don't know, I don't even think that would work for Bloomington.
I confess, I'm still in the process of reviewing. I wasn't able to get to it based on life logistics until today, and so I'm just kind of working through it still. My high level impression is that. You know, it, there, there's some pros and cons, yeah, to, to. Having this more formal in the, in the form of city code versus putting it in something that's more like a. An administrative policy statement that is adopted and shared on the council website, you know, for people's. Viewing, like something like that is slightly easier to change by way of just kind of a commotion and a vote at a meeting. As opposed to, you know, formally bringing legislation. I do think our title two, including this, tends to be a little. Overwrought. So I, I, I don't have especially strong feelings, can, can. I'm, I'm trying to recall what. What the concerns or perceived problems were with, with our current approach to order of business and. You know, either the content of it or the codifying of it and what we were looking to address. And if, yeah, other committee members have thoughts specifically about that aspect.
Well, one thing we were, we talked about a few times is discussion at first reading. And I think that, you know, I, I would still like to talk about that. Some things that I noticed. Was that. Consent agendas are used in several cities. And that may sort of save time on very routine things like. Allowing the. The animal shelter interlocal agreement to continue another year or something like that. And then I also noticed that several cities have third readings as a matter of course on their agenda. Which may. You know, especially if we don't have discussion at first reading, so. The status quo is now, having third meeting on the agenda might reinforce the idea that we don't have to adopt something at second reading. Can't make another each meeting. Time.
I think that's something that would potentially help council staff to.
Okay.
Instead of before, you know, the day before meeting, rushing to complete an amendment and make sure that all the cross references. And other areas of the code would match up with that within twenty four hours. If we can have a third reading. It would provide more time to. Identify any potential errors. And allow us to operate more efficiently too.
If, if we were to. Allow more like regularly. Entertain third readings, I guess. I think we would also probably have to communicate. In some way with the administration to say like, hey, if you need something. Like done sooner, that needs to be communicated because we might be taking. An extra reading to process this, or just any type of communication like that, just so they're not like, we really need this passed today. No one's ready to do that.
Yeah, definitely.
To, to me, the notion of, I mean. When we moved away from the practice of using a committee of the whole. As, as kind of, as a matter of course, for all legislation, for a variety of reasons, and kind of learned sense from the, the former PAC that. Our use of that consistent with Roberts even, which, well, we weren't really consistent with Roberts, but. The PAC sort of, if I'm recalling correctly, didn't distinguish between those types of meetings anyway. So it kind of. It, it created some constraints that limited our flexibility. And moving towards regular sessions has been part of an overall evolution and process that I think. Gave us more flexibility to pass something kind of the same night it is, and, and we typically do, that it is getting first substantive discussion at second reading. But introduced a little bit of the. Potential for, for challenges or time crunches that. Our, our counsel attorney just described. And that's what I think is maybe the most significant, like substantive issue we're, we're grappling with here. And there's. Both the idea of discussing at first reading and the idea of using third readings. Both get at that kind of from like a different side, I think. And so maybe there's a question of, I mean, and there's some practical implications of which approach we would use. I would kind of favor, I mean, third reading is always available, like that's always an option for us. But it really does elongate the process quite a lot, especially with our practice of introducing deliberative sessions and not having quite as frequent of regular sessions. So I, I think on balance, I, I'd be interested in exploring the. Evolving our code to, to allow substantive discussions of. evolving our code to allow substantive discussions of of legislation at first reading that would still only be that we would not consider adopting typically, but except for the, you know, in rare cases of real compelling need. And there's already state code protections around that in terms of having to have, I think, unanimous consent to do so and two thirds majority to pass. I could be wrong about those details offhand, but we've kind of like added like basically an extra prohibition in local code preventing discussion at first reading. And to me, that seems maybe the element that could go here and that we could shift shift practice. But I think, yeah, we'll have to really be thoughtful about crafting that that proposal and proposing it to the council.
What do you think, Sydney? Do you think either third readings or discussion at first reading? Mine would be better than the other or neither or?
I'm leaning towards first reading, but I will say it all just depends on how it gets set up. Because I just want to make sure that like it makes sense for city staff and our staff and clerk staff and I think we might need more input from various groups before we really made that type of decision.
Oh, sorry. I think it would encourage that better a better process for amendments, because oftentimes you might think you want to amend something, but you don't really know until you have the conversation with the city staff who are presenting the legislation or the city council member who's bringing it. And often that happens in the meeting itself. And so it's it's gets a little bit tricky. And then there's kind of this like pressure inherently to like pass the thing and not, you know, wait for a third reading to do an amendment. So I think actually discussing with saying, having some level of substantive discussion, maybe even time limited substantive discussion at first reading would allow maybe more efficient and less stressed, time stressed production of amendments that are better informed.
To your point, council members, you like, I often meet with Attorney Anna Holmes, the legal department, and Julius Mitchell, who's giving this guy, I think is legislative special legislation specialist in the office of the mayor to discuss pending or even before it becomes pending legislation. So that's something that recently has evolved over the last two or three months.
Okay, that's great.
So and the intention is to hopefully identify any any time constraints with respect to legislation. And then also to discuss any peculiarities in terms of timing or the legislation itself.
Well, would it be helpful then to invite some guests to our next meeting to discuss, like, maybe the deputy mayor, maybe the controller, because some of this is about, you know, preparation of performances that may have deadlines and have public notice requirements that are different. Because that would be helpful.
I'm wondering if maybe the first step also is for me to speak with Anna and also Julius, who I think are kind of the point people for the administration on those topics, you know, in terms of scheduling.
Well, do you want to talk to them and then get back to me and then we can see who they think should be part of the conversation at our next CCP meeting? Matt or Sydney, do you have other thoughts or who should be? I mean, the clerk's office obviously is part of part of these meetings anyway, and that would be important. I don't know if the clerk herself would want to come for that discussion.
Would you serve?
What about this idea of consent agendas? Where somebody has to make a judgment call as to what is appropriate to go into a consent agenda? And having been on the planning commission in the past, there is a consent agenda, but anybody can move to take something off of it and have a full discussion. So staff still have to be ready for that.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same basic principle of unanimous consent, right? And if we don't have it, yeah, I think that is an adequate protection that any individual member can choose to bring an item off. And yeah, to your point, Councilmember Pymon Smith, yeah, we have to be ready. Staff, whoever's presenting the legislation has to be ready for that. We do use consent agendas at the utility service board as well, and I think it is very helpful with you know, yeah, kind of basic and administrative items and keeping meetings running smoothly and efficiently. I think it's at least worth trying.
In favor of maybe not surprising staff, maybe we could also just have a an expectation like, hey, if you think that you're going to want to discuss this, give our staff a heads up so that they can prepare.
Well, I mean, I think the president sets the agenda, right? So I think if the president feels like they, if they can predict that people will want to discuss it, they wouldn't put it on the consent agenda.
Right. But if there were any, like, if you're going into a meeting and like something's on the consent agenda that maybe you would like to talk about.
Oh, somebody else.
Yeah, just let staff know.
I agree with that. I think what we, of course, have to kind of reserve the right for any person, any council member to make to move to remove something from the consent agenda just at the meeting with no prior notice, but I think as a norm and as a as a expectation for the sake of collaboration, like, I agree that if if, once you receive the packets and review the packet, if you think you're going to request something be removed from the consent agenda as a courtesy, communicating that with probably council leadership and the relevant staff or council member who's presenting the legislation would be helpful.
So how should we proceed with this proposal for consent agendas?
Do we want to bundle it with the first reading consideration to like kind of set of changes in a proposal?
Yeah, I think we should run it by the administration as well. So we could, we can pair those two.
That would be nice to talk to them all at once, too.
Do you envision this would potentially, I mean, we can do standalone things, but this is also Title II relevant. Would it fold into more of an omnibus Title II item if timely? Or do you envision doing this separately, given the nature of it?
I envision doing it separately because the Title II is going to be, you know, sometime in 2026, I think.
That sounds good.
One other thing I just wanted to highlight, looking at these other cities that order of business. At least two of them, Greenwood and Tarahoe, require that a council member sponsor each piece of legislation. Whereas here in Bloomington, the administration, you know, is the sponsor of a lot of legislation and there's no council member that has to sponsor it. I just thought it was interesting. I don't feel strongly that we need to do that, but thought it was interesting.
On balance, I would actually favor that practice. I don't think it's a huge deal, but I of course, a council can choose not to introduce an item if if folks feel like it is not ready or you know, hasn't had adequate collaboration with the council in advance, if we expect some type of invitation from the administration, for instance, to give input in something in the development stages or opportunity. So we don't generally have that opportunity. We don't generally hear anything about, you know, legislation before it lands in the packet. But I don't necessarily think that's a great practice as far as collaboration between the branches goes. I know certainly when we bring legislation, there is a strong expectation on the mayor's side that we have worked extensively with staff to develop and vet it. And that's not really a reciprocal expectation. It would probably look a little different, but you know, I think if we wanted to be more collaborative, I think having some touch points or opportunities to be involved or give input in the policy development stage from the mayor's side would would be welcome. And that's kind of unrelated, speaking to that that concept, but it's it's it, I guess it is related in the sense that the idea of identifying and having a council member sponsor for all legislation brought by the administration kind of helps create structure for collaboration, kind of in the same way we're doing with the board and commission liaisons, right? The idea that if you're developing legislation as a council member, you're going to try to, you know, reach out to the relevant liaison if that's not you and to the relevant board or commission. It would encourage the same thing on the administration side of making sure that there and departments really vary quite widely in their practices with this, like planning a transportation, for instance, they've done a lot of very active work with the commissions in bringing legislation. I think some of the other departments less so. And so, yeah, I don't know. I think it's an interesting concept and I think it's something worth exploring because I think it could help build structures that that actually enhance collaboration and address some shortcomings in my view, in current practice practices.
I don't feel strongly one way or the other, but I'm open to exploring.
Well, I mean, I also think that it I think in principle, it's a good idea. In practice, it may end up, you know, that the mayor's administration would just always go through the same council member who, you know, may be the most amenable to just bringing something forward. I don't know. So you know, it could be a good tool for collaboration, but it could just be something that they check off their list. So I think maybe if if you would like to pursue it, Matt, I think maybe talking with Gretchen or the mayor to see how they would approach it. Or whether they would immediately get defensive. I don't know.
Yeah, it's an interesting, even from a procedural standpoint, it's a little odd. And occasionally runs into some awkwardness that the mayor is essentially able to just, I mean, I guess the the sort of pseudo sponsorship kind of comes in the form of the president putting it on the agenda, I suppose. And I agree with you that there's a possibility that it would just sort of become a rote and meaningless formality of like the president sponsoring all legislation or something, you know, that comes from the administration. I think there's also a possibility that it could lead to productive improvement and iteration and and even conversation about the council sponsor, like it might lead to some questions for the council sponsor, for instance, for what they're, what it looked like when the administration approached them. Did they have any involvement or or questions or participation in the in the development of legislation? I'm happy to explore it more deeply. I think of it as something that would be maybe related to the other two more substantive changes we've discussed just in this section of the agenda with regard to first reading, discussion at first readings and the possible use of consent agendas. For, I think for a procedural standpoint, it makes a heck of a lot more sense to me that that all legislation is sponsored by a member of the legislative body.
Well, let's leave that for another day then. Any other feedback from the committee members? And we can, you know, go back and talk about some of these another time as well. Okay, well, let's go to public comment then. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on either our order of business or anything else related to the committee on council processes? Mr. Angie?
Thank you, council member Isabel Pymon Smith. Christopher Envy from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Just a couple of quick comments. I like the consent agenda. I think streamlined some of what goes before the council to make the meeting shorter always beneficial. I think those meetings do run a little long and I think just for your own sanity, it makes sense. Reports from the mayor and boards and commissions. This one's a hard one. I agree with council member Flaherty on bringing, if you're going to bring in nonprofits, if they have a staff member with it, what ends up happening with some of these, it's the nonprofit sort of selling what they've been doing the last year. And they might be before multiple political bodies doing the same thing, which makes it not city oriented. And this is where the discretion of the presidents really matters because some of these reports from the actual boards and the mayor are really important and you really want to get to the nitty gritty of them, including tax like tax abatements, for instance, that came up recently. Other ones are just kind of going by going through the motions. So the five minutes really works well. I don't know how you do it, but I would give the council president, which if you're taking on that task, you kind of understand what the councils with before you that is really important and stuff that is less so. So that's where I'm at on that, but I appreciate the meeting today. I've had you guys do quite a bit today and was productive. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who would like to comment? We will come back to the committee. So before we adjourn, let's just double check our calendars. Make sure that we have our next meeting down on the eighth. Is it great? Does that still work for the people who are here? Yes. Okay, so for that meeting, after Lisa talks to Anna and Julius, we'll try to invite some people from the administration to talk about this order of business potential reviews. And then we'll have some more updates on with deliberation sessions and such. Anything else?
I also communicated with Sam role regarding the proposal and people that deliver first sessions.
Yes, that's right.
I thought that helped me count before the next meeting also. Actually, one other thing, and I totally spaced this and Chief Deputy Sookie in Dallas online, and I caught this earlier. It looks like our October meeting is also scheduled when the city has observed holiday, which is the October 13th, which is the Indigenous People's Day. And since I think that's a holiday that's a holiday for the city, the city is closed. And so that is the second Monday in October where we usually have these types of meetings. So need to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could we do October 6th instead?
Double checking calendars for a moment. Yes, I believe that should be fine for me as well.
I'll have to check with council member Daly. I thought she had something like on the first Mondays, maybe. So let me check with with her and if October 6th doesn't work, then we can revisit.
And it should also work for the clerk's office, too.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all. We are adjourned.